Good afternoon. Today is February the 5th, 2019. Our thought for today, "Men are born to succeed, not to fail," and that's by Henry David Thoreau. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. I tell you, you're gonna hear the bell, the clock's gonna ring, it's a little bit off, um, but it is 12 o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and, and get started. So don't get startled by the bell when it rings. Uh, tonight, uh, we have our guest pastor tonight, uh, he's gonna lead us in our invocation. It's Pastor Jerry Stokes of the Springfield Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor, if you would, come to, come tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. Um, we appreciate, uh, you taking, taking this engagement, if you will. Um, tell us a little bit about yourself, tell us a little bit about your ministry, and if you will, uh, pray for our community.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Jerry Stokes, Senior Pastor, Springfield Missionary Baptist Church in New Bern, Georgia. Um, I've been there for three years now. We are, uh, just trying to, uh, succeed in our community by reaching that loss, by teaching the ones to be found. Uh, our vision is basically, uh, that we're worshiping and we have the Word of God at hand and we witness to others. Uh, I'm also pastor of Springfield, but I'm a proud business owner, uh, Elite Transportation Agency. And so, uh, we're serving several counties in the state of Georgia and a proud father. So, um, this time, we're gonna pray, and we can bow our heads at this time. Kind God, our Father, we just wanna say thank you for being Alpha and Omega, the first and the last, the beginning and the end. We just thank you now for the second month of this brand-new year. We thank you for our nation and for our state. We declare and decree your blessings over our city, and we give you thanks and praise for our board and our chair and all of our elective officials that serve us. We ask you to crown their head with knowledge and with wisdom. Give them the ingenuity so that when they come together, they can make great decisions upon our behalf. We believe in fresh ideas and new visions for 2019, and we stay humble to your grace and to your word. As the word says, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and all of your righteousness, and all of these things shall be added unto us." So we believe your word, we stand on your word, we're succeeded by your word, and we'll forever give you honor and all the praise in your mighty and most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor First, I wanna take this opportunity before you go to thank you, um, for the service that you provide in our community, um, for what your church do and what you do in our community. So we wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. I got a little token here of appreciation for you. Next, we're gonna have our, um, pledge by Commissioner Stan Edwards. I wanna announce before we go into further, um, uh, thank you Pastor for that and thank you, um, Commissioner Edwards for that. Also, we have Commissioner Nancy Schultz, she's on the call, so she will be attending the meeting tonight, she'll do it by phone tonight, so.
Um, if you could help me, Brian, since you have Commissioner Schultz on the phone. Commissioner Schultz, where are you calling us from today? And have you missed any other meetings this year? January 1, please. Okay. Okay, the Open Meetings Act does allow commissioners to call in and be available a couple times per year. It appears that Ms. Schultz is in San Diego, and as such, she's gonna be joining us via telephone. And if you have any troubles, Commissioner Schultz hearing us, please just let us know, and we'll do our best to make sure that you can participate in the best manner possible.
We're gonna try, but before we get going, again, we're gonna try a different microphone. Uh, Mr. Father, if you would, would you, would you try that mic that's connected to the table, please? Jack's gonna say something.
Good, uh, Commissioner Schultz, can you say something again to Mike?
Oh, my, that's pretty loud, I can hear that loud and clear.
Sure, we wanna hear you. Okay.
Can y'all hear? Okay, that's, that's, that's. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the, uh, adoption of the agenda. Uh, before we move on, I wanna take the opportunity, on the youth chairman's privilege, to remove item number 10. Item number 11. Item number 14. It's 10, 11, and 14. 10, 11, and 14. Uh, it's not, we're not, it's not ready yet. Yeah, 10, 11, and 14. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
Commissioner Edwards, please, Mr. Chairman. Um, unless I'm seeing this wrong, we have two number, two, uh, number nine, I bet. Is that, is the second number nine part of the agenda as well? No.
So correction, we're gonna remove items 11, 12, and, and then 15. That's juvenile discussion consideration, uh, again, juvenile discussion consideration and the city of Porterdale. Everybody okay? Somebody say hello? Everybody okay? You okay? You got it? Thank you. I seek a motion that we, um, amend the agenda as follows. This has been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass five to zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments, um, about agenda topics only. Um, you have three minutes to do so, if you would come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gladstone Nicholson, 495 Lakeside Circle, Covington. I come here tonight just to say, I'm here to be enthralled, to be amazed, because I understand the strategic plan is being brought out tonight. I wanna just thank the Fosters for their great diligence, what they've done. I'm not sure how many man-hours they've put into it, but I'm sure it's probably more than they thought they would need, which is good, because input from, uh, as many people as possible, I think is a better way to go. So, again, I'm just looking forward to hearing what's being said about that, as we probably, uh, might say, have a new beginning for our county. And thank you, Commissioners and Chairmen, for putting it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Chairman's Report. I had an opportunity to, uh, spend time with the Sheriff Department. They had their award ceremony last Friday. It was a great, a great turnout. Um, they had a lot of people, I mean, there was a lot of family there supporting their, um, employees. And, uh, there was, I think, I think, three, I think, three deputies received a war for saving someone's life. Uh, and, and, you know, they were telling their stories and it brought tears to your eyes, uh, the dedication those guys have over there. So, I wanna send a shout-out to, to the employees over there, did a great job. Um, also, tonight, we do have our strategic plan. I think the Fosters are here. Y'all wanna come up? Y'all wanna come up and stand with Mr. Kerr? Uh, the Fosters have did, uh-
I got too big a target.
Uh-huh.
Too big a target.
The Fosters have did such a, uh, wonderful job, uh, with this strategic plan and so many people involved with it. Tonight, we just wanna tell them thank you. Uh, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to present to you the final, um, version of the strategic plan that we're asking for you to adopt tonight, um, to present to you as well as to the citizens of the county. Um, this project started a little over a year ago, and, uh, we've had one, sometimes two, day-long meetings per week working on this. Um, prior to that, the, uh, the, our consultants, uh, conducted, uh, several, um, stakeholder meetings with, uh, the various stakeholder groups that included, whoops, excuse me, that included, um, uh, all of the various, uh, groups in our community, including millennials, the faith-based group, uh, general citizens, um, businesses, big and small, uh, and the various institutions, just a very broad range. We had about 300 and, uh, plus participants in the stakeholder, uh, meetings who, uh, gave input and feedback, uh, to our consultants about what it is that they liked about the county, with the things that we were doing, uh, what we may be doing well, and those things that we needed to work on, and what were our biggest challenges. Out of all of those, uh, comments, which totaled about 100 pages of, uh, single-line typed, um, script, um, we, uh, narrowed it down to what, um, you will see tonight. The way that, um, the plan was devised, if you will, um, and was formulated, was a core group of, of individuals was created, uh, that was made up of, uh, some of the elected officials, some of the board members who were, uh, on there. Um, we had department heads, we had citizens, we had representation from the faith-based community. We also extended invitations to the, um, Board of Education, to the Sheriff's Office, uh, and to the, uh, cities, um, within the county, um, to take part in this. And so we did have quite a broad group of people who began to look at it. Through, as I said, a year's worth of meetings, uh, we, uh, narrowed these down and created a vision, a mission statement, our, uh, excuse me.
Can I, can I do something while you're doing that?
Sure.
Um, Judy, could you come up, please? Um, Trey? Pastor Trey, could you come up, please? Uh, Laura, could you come up, please? I just wanted to stand with you.
All some of the members?
Yep.
Any of the members who were on the planning, the core planning group that are here tonight, perhaps maybe we can get them to come over?
Yeah. I know, I hate to interrupt you, but it was a big team effort, and I just wanna make sure that, um, that we, you know, that we say thank you to all of you guys. Yeah.
This represents quite a bit of, of effort and quite a bit of energy. Um, I can say from my own, uh, personal experience, was, um, was, was very rewarding, and I've asked, uh, Trey Bailey to just pay a few words to you here in a couple of minutes about the experience and the process and what his impressions are. So, um, with that, I, I think we'll go to the first slide, which is the, our vision statement. Um, the vision is what Newton County government, uh, what is it? It's what we aspire to be in the future, and in broad terms, what'll be our legacy. The vision is Newton County is a thriving community united through strong relationships and partnerships. Now, this is a very long-range vision. This can reach out 50 years, I think it'll still be valid 100 years from now. The mission, and this is, uh, this is a high-level statement outlining what we wanna do for the next three years. And this is where we're gonna concentrate our efforts. This is where we wanna put our, our money, so to speak, um, on, and our efforts on working on these particular things. The mission statement that we, uh, came up with is Newton County is a safe, well-planned community that respects and values an informed citizenry, embraces diversity, preserves natural resources, and cultivates economic and social opportunities. This mission statement clearly reflects what we heard in the stakeholder meetings. There was a theme that was running throughout, and it touches on all of those things. Uh, next, uh, slide, if you would please, Brian. The key stakeholders were citizens of all ages, businesses, the governing authorities, um, as you can see there, the, the various boards and the municipalities, um, and anybody that does business or anybody that, anybody that resides here or does business here or business, they're all our stakeholders in this. Next slide, please. The core values that we determined, that we have, and these are what we believe in as a county, that's what we stand for, it's the way we treat each other, and so, those are collaboration, we work together to achieve our common goals. Dependable, we honor our commitments. Energetic, we encourage passion and creativity that inspires our community to thrive. Equitable, we advocate fairness and impartiality in all things we do for the good of all. Integrity, we stand by truth and transparency. And unity, we are an exceptional and inseparable community. And again, these are all things that we heard that people in this community stand for, but also what they want us as a government to stand for. Next slide. The Rally and Cry will be, is One Newton. This is an initiative, as you all know, that was started by our chairman, and this is what we wanna use to inspire people to act and inspire us to come together as a community. Uh, next slide, please. We developed five strategies, five main strategies which to work on, uh, over the next three years. And so these are from 2019 to 2022, and these are to help us move towards becoming the county that our vision has, the vision that we aspire to and what we stated. Next slide, please, thank you. Strategy A, cultivate a culture of trust. What do we mean by that? Promote, we mean, what that means is that we are going to promote transparency, demonstrate integrity, and encourage communication in the community. The next strategy, enhance quality of life. Support initiatives that provide a sense of belonging, security, and well-being. One of the things that is a common theme that we discovered is people like the small-town feel of Newton County, and that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. People in the more rural areas think of small-town as very large lots, very sparse, uh, neighbors, uh, but they wanna come to town and they have a, they have the ability to, to come and to see small business. People in the more crowded areas, in the more, rather dense areas of, of the county, look at a small-town feel more as a, as what the city of Covington, the city of Porterdale represents, what the city of Mansfield, the town of Mansfield represents. Um, so, quality of life is a big issue with everybody. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to gloss over the culture of trust. That's a very, very big, that was probably one of the things that we heard, um, most often, was creating a culture of trust. We know we have a lot of work to do, and so we are committed to do that. And, uh, there are other, I will mention too, that there are other, what we're calling operational action items, that actually are sub-points to this, that each of the departments will be working on as they contribute their part to, um, uh, reaching that vision. Strategy C, create a framework for strategic economic development. Um, and what we mean by that is to create opportunities for economic development throughout the county for existing, for our existing businesses, but also for future businesses. We want the county to grow, but everybody wants the county to grow properly. We want to have the opportunity to provide jobs for the people who live here, so that you can live and work in the same community. The majority of the people in the county still commute to work outside of the county, and we wanna try to reverse that. But, and also, a healthy economy gives us a healthy community and a healthy county. Next slide. Strategy D, strengthen and expand facilities and infrastructure to meet the needs of the public. We wanna make sure that we have all the physical components. Those are the infrastructure items, like roads and bridges and water supply. We wanna make sure that we have the appropriate buildings for the citizens to, to come to do their, their business with the county. And we know that, that as we continue to grow, we continue to have congested roads, and that's a big, a very big issue. And we are working very hard on that to obtain as much leverage as we can with our squash dollars, through grant money, and through also, uh, gaining, or, uh, excuse me, um, obtaining money from the Department of Transportation, the Georgia Department of Transportation, and doing everything we can to get the most bang for our buck with our, with our dollars. Strategy E, to provide a safe and secure community. We wanna make sure that we're protecting our citizens against any threats that there are to their well-being and quality of life, and also to improve their perception of safety. People's perception is their reality, and we wanna create an environment that will have that, so that that perception of safety is, is prevalent. We're, we are looking at working, currently, we, we are, uh, expanding our fire services department, the sheriff's department is actively hiring, and, uh, we are also looking at our EMA, Operations Emergency Management, uh, as long as with things like the, uh, building a new animal shelter. Um, so what we wanna do is make sure that we have provided for all of those things, and not only give the citizens, but also, this'll help attract, um, economic development as well. So it's, it's a two-fold. So that, in a, um, in a nutshell, is the strategic plan for the next three years. At the end, beginning and, and towards the middle of the second year, we will be, the third year, rather, we'll be looking at and doing an analysis on what we need to do to, for the next three years. There will be a continual review process. We've set up some matrix, some, um, a, uh, some key performance measures and a matrix to determine, so that the citizens can tell us how well we are doing or not, and so that we can make appropriate adjustments from there. And, again, the vision is a, look far into the future, and these are the things we're gonna concentrate on over the next, uh, three years. And so with that, I'd like to ask, um, Trey Bailey if he would step up and maybe tell us a little bit about, um, his experiences and, and, uh, the processes and so forth.
Thank you, sir. Um, we know that you have put a, a lot of time and effort in this, uh, to make sure that this plan, um, get kicked off, so, uh, Mr. Kerr, we greatly appreciate you.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Trey Bailey, I'm the executive pastor at East Ridge Community Church, and I'm also District One Representative, the Newton County Board of Education, and I'm humbled and privileged to serve our community in that capacity. Uh, as I can say, as a lifelong resident, I love Newton County. Um, I've had the opportunity to, to move to other areas, but I just have not been able to uproot myself from this county that, that I, that I love. When you cut me, I'm gonna bleed Newton County, just like any of you. Um, and I believe Newton County is a thriving community united through strong relationships and partnerships. Thriving, united, community of one Newton. Thriving means more than simply just surviving or getting by. Thriving is to have life, thriving is active, thriving is alive. That's Newton County. A thriving, united community of 110,000 people, that doesn't happen by accident. Anything that thrives must be cultivated. Thriving communities don't happen by accident, they are strategic. 110,000 people don't stumble into unity. Unity takes hard work. Unity happens when we sacrifice our un-wants in order to meet someone else's needs. Unity happens through partnerships, strong relationships, bold leadership, and an agreed-upon guiding direction, a north star, if you will. And I believe that that direction, that north star, is best communicated in a solid, workable, simple strategic plan. When I was approached, uh, about being a part of the core planning team for this Newton County Strategic Team, I was humbled and honored at the invitation. Strategic planning is something that, I'm one of those weirdos that enjoy doing that. Uh, I kinda wired that way to think, vision spills to mission, and mission spills to some sort of action plan. Uh, my wife likes to joke that if we were having pizza night at the house, that I would have all the girls, the stakeholders, in the room to figure out what their needs were, so we can then create a strategic plan to make these pizzas, and we'd all have a great vision of what it would look like and the mission to be accomplished, so. Um, wow. Or, that's a little bit obsessive-compulsive, sure. Um, or maybe, uh, like me, you guys know that a solid plan agreed upon beforehand can help guide your decision-making, your resource allocation, and better lead you to a more unified outcome. I believe Newton County can be a thriving community unified through strong relationships and partnerships. I believe in one Newton. I believe our best bet to, to, to being that thriving and united community is following a solid strategic plan. So this plan, being presented tonight, is birthed from the input and needs of the community. Uh, in our research, one prevailing theme, and Lloyd has already mentioned it, uh, is, is that everyone, regardless of district or demographic, had something to say about this small-town feel. And when you first hear that, you probably have a picture in your mind of what a small-town feel means to you. But when you dig a little deeper, this small-town feel is really quite ambiguous, and it means a little something to different people. The details of the definition are different depending on where you live in the county. But what we did see were some common threads to this small-town feel. There are strong relationships, people and leaders that they could trust, clear and open communication, enhanced quality of life, a sense of belonging, safety and security, and of course, all this with jobs and entertainment nearby, right? Sounds like utopia. But it's basically, that is the core of everyone's definition of this small-town feel. So what could county government do, right? Like, what, what could you focus on for the next three years that would help meet the needs of the stakeholders? And the mission became clearer. Newton County is a safe, well-planned community that respects and values an informed citizenry, embraces diversity, preserves natural resources, and cultivates economic and social opportunities. So this is what the county government will focus on for the next three years. Safe, well-planned, informed citizens, embracing diversity, preserving natural resources, and promoting strategic economic development. So I believe Newton County, all 110,000 citizens, can support this strategic plan. If this is executed well in conjunction with municipality support, we can grow strategically and still maintain our small-town feel. But it will take bold leadership, strong partnerships, and a well-executed plan. So like any well-constructed strategic plan, it continues to get more detailed the deeper you dive into it. After the overall vision of thriving, unified community, then we have the three-year mission, the things that we'll concentrate on. Then from there, Lloyd talked about the five distinct strategies, each with a host of action items, uh, all the way to boots-on-the-ground. That's a detailed plan. And I'll conclude my remarks with this. At the beginning of this meeting, Chairman Vanez, he quoted Henry David Thoreau, he said, "Men were born to succeed, not to fail." And I'd like to add to that, if you'll humor me, I'm a pastor, so I'd like to quote this piece of scripture here to you. Proverbs 29:18 says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And so if we're born to succeed, and to succeed to not perish, we need vision, then now's the time. We need a clear, compelling vision of a preferred future for Newton County. Not a preferred future for one district, a preferred future for one Newton. So let's think about it just for a minute. If a commissioner, if every commissioner, if every city council member, every mayor- member, every mayor, chief, department head, civic leader, school administrator, each pastor, if each one were to truly represent the best interests of their district, zone, church, school, neighborhood, but at the detriment of the entire county, what have we gained? What if every decision made by those groups of people, what if instead, they thought of a one Newton first? Now, now hear me out. I don't mean that we, that we put aside our convictions. No, no, we hold true to our convictions, our ideology, but we come together in unity, moving forward. I believe we can do that. Thriving, unified community. I'd say if we did that, then we would be a beacon of hope in East Metro area. A hope that unity is still an achievable goal. Not uniformity, no one wants a one-size-fits-all solution, no one in Newton County wants that. But we want to embrace our diversity, view it as a beautiful thing, and still move forward together in unity. The fact that you have commissioned this planning process shows that you are the visionary leaders for this time in history. You will be the bold leaders who will lay the foundation for unity that the next generation will build on. You accepted the call and the lead to sit in that chair, because you too believe that Newton County can be a thriving community, united through strong relationships and partnerships. And now you get to champion that cause with great clarity as one board, one Newton. So I look forward to hearing you accept this proposal tonight. I'm even more excited to see how the strategic plan pulls this team together, this community together, for this common goal of one Newton. And I appreciate the opportunity to share with you this evening. I believe in this plan because I believe in you as visionary leaders. I believe in this plan because of the good people of Newton County putting aside their differences, coming together, working together, and achieving an audacious goal of unity. And I, along with the members of the core team, will be here tonight to answer any questions you might have. Last thing, thank you for this question.
Wow, I want to join your church.
Then let's go eat.
Wow. Guys, I'm going to open it up for comments, but I am, after we do this, I'm going to take, I'm going to use Chairman's privilege tonight to go ahead and move this up and, and take a vote on it now. So, Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we put together this, this, this planning, who was all included? Was, it was, know the community, we know the districts, because we had a meeting in my district, in District Four. But who else, was it, was, was the, who else was included? Was the council, constitutional officers included in this planning?
We did, we did invite members from the city councils, the mayors. We-
Constitutional officers?
Constitutional officers.
We met with 400 people.
Thank you. We had business leaders, we had, we got, we identified one of the groups as millennials, we identified all of the faith-based community, the, any civic organization we met with. We met with the Ministers Union. There were, and they were meeting as a part of the faith-based community, too. It was an extremely broad group of people. You all recommended certain people to be a part of the team as well. And so each commissioner was given an opportunity to do that. And we did have open meetings for all of the community.
Absolutely. And the reason why, you know, I mentioned the constitutional officer, because I think all of them run it, excuse me, run it large. And they too would have a feel as, as for what they may think is, is needed. And I know that specifically, we got with our first responders, and they gave a good, which, you know, yeah, I mean, thumbs up and our, and some of our employers too as well. And just as the pastor said, you know, we, we all, we all should, should embrace planning, embrace a little bit of change. But I too, just like you, and just like Chairman Baines, you know, I believe that there's one thing that we could do, and I've talked about this for, for a long time. It's a little thing I think Jesus told us. I think he, he also said in the, in John, what's it, 13, 1334, he said, "I have one new commandment," and he said, "Love ye one another, as I have loved you." And I think he was talking to his disciples, and he would tell them, said, "Look here, if you show people love, say, hey, you show it. You start showing it first, and it's spreading, you know, it'll, it'll spread, probably like a flu spreading this year, probably like a wildfire." And I think that's, that's the key to everything. I think he told us that. And he said, "Well, you may not do the rest of them good, but I know you can do this one if you really want to." And I think that's what we need to encourage as far as planning, is the love that we have for one another. I think it'll, it'll conquer all things. You know, he could conquer maybe the two rooms that we have down here on Enry Street, at the Old City Barn, where it used to say, and, you know, this is Black History Month, and it used to say that it was for colored and whites only. You know, maybe it would encourage, maybe at some point, they'll push it down, you know, as far as history. Maybe it would also encourage that statue that we have out here in the square, encourage, maybe we all get together and see if, if it's the will of the people who, who are here, whether they're Muslim, whatever, in order to think of terms, bring it for a vote here on this board, so that we can share it with the city of Covetown. And so it just looks stuff like that love that makes our community great. And I was born here, I will die here, and I will be buried here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is, again, I want to take an opportunity to thank this core team for all the countless hours that you guys have invested in this plan, putting this plan together. Without you guys, this wouldn't have happened. So we want to take this opportunity to thank you. Commissioner Schultz and Commissioner Cowan were part of the planning team, so we thank, thank you guys. Every commissioner here had an opportunity to have meetings, to hold meetings in their district. So we thank all of you guys. So everybody can take some ownership in this. The sheriff is at a, he's at a champ graduation tonight, and he, he called a little while ago and said that he, he appreciated being part of this team as well, and told me to relay that message to you guys. So, Commissioner Devon, any more questions? I want to take a point of privilege tonight to get ready to go ahead and take care of business on number eight, discussion, approval of Newton County Strategic Plan. I seek a motion that we approve.
So move this, stated by Chairman.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, and seconded by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. All in fa, I'm sorry, Commissioner, end of discussion. I'm sorry. Comment. Okay.
Should, should I wait till Commissioner comments after the meeting?
No, 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 you get discussion now, go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll try to be brief, and I know, I don't want to steal Nancy's, none of, I know she's itching to talk, right? So, as I met with the Fosters today for a final review, you know, I'm about to nuts in the bolts in application of this, of this particular strategic plan. I look forward to what's going to, what it's going to bring in terms of operational efficiency for the county. For instance, the upcoming budget discussions, the department heads will need to tie their budget requests to specific initiatives. Second thing I wanted, the second comment I want to make was, and something about what Frank and Allison mentioned today was, that it seemed that, that everyone didn't go along to get along, but everyone, especially on the core team, was very supportive, and there were no major roadblocks. And I thought about that for about two seconds, and I came to the conclusion pretty quick that when you let the minds of the core team, the minds of the larger team, the at-large members, the citizen tax, the taxpayers, when you let them originate the initiatives, for lack of a better term, when those, when those ideas come, when their concerns come from those people, and you address those concerns, myself as a commissioner, or a leader within the county, you can't, you can't possibly have a problem with that, because that, that's of the people. And that's who we're supposed to be serving. So I think that's exactly what this, this plan is going to accomplish for. And like I said, I'll step back one more time and say, operational speaking, I look, I look forward to being able to tie this, this, each, each budget, each budget item, or any initiative that comes from the core team in some manner, hopefully we can tie this strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz? Um, your comments on the plan?
While we're here, I said, I- Something on my mic. There we go, there we go. A phenomenal plan. And even once we had our district meetings, what I have done is, since then, I have attended a couple homeowners association meetings within my district. And so each time I go, I share with them this plan, and where we're going, and let them know that this is the direction that we're heading. And I got phenomenal feedback from the citizens. And when they now see that they are a major stakeholder in this, it excites them even more to know that now our local government, we're going to be transparent, we're going to be able to communicate with them, and talk with them, and let them know what's going on, and, and decrease that communication gap that we may have had in the past. And so, as I went out to these homeowners association meetings of these past couple of weeks, and presented them with these strategies, they were excited about it. And so, I'm, I'm grateful that I was able to have a district meeting, where I was able to invite some individuals out in District Two, all good feedback afterwards. And I believe that we are moving in the right direction. And we are definitely on the cusp of being one Newton. And I want to thank each and every one of you. I came in on the tail end. So if I had have been here, I would have jumped in and got my hands dirty as well with the rest of you. But thank you, thank you so much for everything that you've done, all the time, this effort, and the Fosters. Amazing, amazing, amazing job. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Ms. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to express my thanks to the team, the group of folks that I work with, and made some good friends, and got to know-
Over a year.
-some people very well.
Yeah. I like that, over a year.
Over a year. But I also want to let everybody know that this is, it's on our website, if you want to take a look at it. It's, there's several different places to link. It's on the front page, I believe. Brian, is that correct? And if you look under, if you click on the government section, it's also listed there. So you have links to be able to go and see the full text of what we're presenting to you all tonight. You can see there. So everybody can see what's there, and then you can help monitor, you can help us stay on track. And, you know, we very much expect to be, have our feet held to the fire. And we're also very committed to make sure that we're successful.
Thank you, sir. Is there no more discussion? All in favor? It passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's a big deal to us. We're excited about this. County Manager, Ms. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask Sarah Hall and Jerry Silvio to come up and to give us a, their report on economic development in the county.
Thank you.
Chairman, welcome to our commissions. Of course, you all know Sarah Hall, my side. So, this is a report on the fourth quarter of 2018 on behalf of the Joint Development Authority, which as we all know is Newton County, Walton, Jasper, and Morgan County. How's that?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just start for your benefit. This is a report on the fourth quarter of 2018 on behalf of the Joint Development Authority of the four counties Morgan, Jasper, Walton, and Newton. So Sarah and I are going to go through our customary checklist, marketing activities, prospects, current tenants, Parkway Extension, financial, other activities, and then activities anticipated for the first quarter of 2019. So with respect to marketing activity, there is no better marketing than success. So success begets success. And the Joint Development Authority has two wins that contribute to good marketing. One was from the Georgia Economic Developer Association Deal of the Year for winning the Facebook Project. And then a second simultaneous award came from the governor for regional cooperation. So, there we are. So that's, that was a big deal. The Georgia Economic Developer Association has a membership of about 800 now. And at the award ceremony, we had, there were probably 400 people from all over the state. So this is, this is a big deal. Of course, we've won this in years past for the Shire project. So we may have the two largest projects in the state of Georgia over the last 10 years. So, and with respect for marketing, then there's a whole lot of that going on by the economic developers representing our, our marketing team, Sarah and Shane from Walton County, month of January. So distributions from this budget would occur in March 2020. So, other activities?
So, one of the things that's really exciting is that Shire and Facebook have spent a long period of time, and I just want to take a moment and recognize Chief Connor, is Chief still here? Chief Connor and County Manager Kerr, and Chairman Marcello Baines for our lifesayer, saver with Takeda. Takeda was working with us on a fire protection program for the Joint Development Authority and for Stanton Springs. And without the leadership of those three gentlemen, I don't know if we would be where we are, which is, we have a happy customer in Takeda, and we're continuing to provide excellent service. And I can't thank the Newton County Fire Services Team enough, Chief Connor, for what he did, and really stepped up to be showing how professional we are, and that we're able to come in and, and be able to do what's needed and what's best to continue to making all of our clients safe. We will continue the discussions on fire plans as we continue to grow the park. Obviously, we're in a unique scenario with multiple counties, and we want to continue making sure that we have the best care possible. We also are moving forward. We're going to timber about 120 acres, and then you will possibly see already the Georgia transmission lines that are going into the eastern portion of the park. And then a big thank you to Ms. Judy. Judy Johnson's been working on the zoning ordinance that matches all the other counties, because again, we're talking three counties that have a footprint out there. And we just want to make sure we have a great uniform system. And so, there's some really wonderful people within the county, and they've done great work. And so we can't thank them enough in other activities that we've had out there. It really shows how Newton County can shine and be a leader.
And just to comment, again, I do a hear-hear echoing Sarah's accolades to the leadership exhibited by the county on the, on the board. So, and on the financial side, it's kind of interesting. We did come in well within the budget that we, that had been put together for Phase One of the Parkway Extension, plus the half a- plus the half a million grant. So that'll look good. And then on the positive, another positive side is on the timbering. We expect from early results that the revenue from the 120 acres will exceed that which we were anticipating. So good news on both those fronts. The timbering actually will commence in late, well, early February now for the eastern track. Marketing efforts continue. Obviously, Facebook construction activities continue, including utility infrastructure and the zoning ordinance amendments presented to Morgan, Newton and Walton. And then the budget will be amended to reflect construction bid, construction estimates for the Parkway extension. So with that, if there are any questions, we'll be glad to field them.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for doing what you do. You know, there've been a lot of changes on their board and things are just, man, it's unbelievable. Things are just moving forward. So I'm excited. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. It's okay. Thank you both for bringing us that, Jerry and Sarah. I want to bring the commissioners' attention to the handout that Sarah gave us. And on page, at page two after you open the handout, it says the Focus Industries. And Sarah, keep me honest, but two years ago, I had a conversation with two different JDA members down there, two different occasions, not members from Newton County, other counties. And verbatim, they both told me that if they had to wait another, this was when we only had Shire. They said if they had to wait another 15 or 20 years for another biopharmaceutical company, that suited them just fine. That didn't, and I said, I told them that that doesn't work for Newton County. Got too much invested. So before, I made the nomination of Jerry and the chairman to go down and be part of that JDA. I had lunch with them one day out at the county barn, if you remember. And I don't know if you remember, Mr. Chairman, or not, but I said, please, make it known to everyone down there that we're not just in the biopharmaceutical business. Now, we don't want a coal burning factory plant out there, for sure. But we, there are other clean industries that we can recruit. And Sarah goes hand in hand with this. But almost instantaneously, that mentality changed. And almost instantaneously, Facebook was a thing. So I want to commend you three especially for that and what it means to Newton County, what it meant to them almost immediately, to us almost immediately. And one other thing, I look forward to those checks rolling, those pilot payments from Facebook and the Shire or the Takeda payments that are starting, I think, Jerry, you said this month, right? And they are graduated payments, right?
Twenty twenty.
One of the things to mention is that, as Jerry mentioned, we have sent out our details to all the Board of Educations about our numbers. You'll receive those once the JDA formalizes their details of the budgets. Because again, the revenue sharing system works that monies, if we don't allocate or use them down at the Joint Development Authority, it will come back to the four counties in your share of the 37.5%.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Can you hear me? Oh, is, thank you. Is there a projection as far as how much money may be projected this year? I mean, do you have, I think last time about 90, somebody hit me on the, was it 92, 92,000 that we used in the?
You're talking about for?
Yeah, because I was thinking.
We will provide you a timeline schedule. And you're correct. And so the first payment will come in on the structure. It's 10% coming in the first year and then a graduated increase on that. And that all comes back to how the county assessor assessed it. So we've given a range. And so we'll be able to give you a more detailed answer this coming up budget cycle. The first pilot payment for the Facebook data center will come in once they receive their CO for their first building. At that time, we're well ahead scheduled. And so I'm not confident that you'll see that before your budget cycle this year, but we are definitely closer than anticipated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here. It's a pleasure working with you guys. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I wanted to mention was that on Tuesday, or I'm sorry, last Thursday night, we graduated our latest recruit class for the Fire Services Department. And so we've added Chief, was it 14 to our ranks? 16, thank you. So we're continuing to improve our public safety position. And it was a, it was a very great celebration. It was about 250 family members there to support those recruits. So that was very heartwarming to see that as well.
Thank you, sir. We're welcome to the family. I sent them a text. So I will, I need to go meet them, guys. I apologize for not being there. So we'll make it up to them. Anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number. No old business, yeah. No old business. So we're going to go to the consent agenda, which is item number 10. Nine, I'm sorry, nine. You had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda's commission and I seek a motion that we approve. There's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five to zero. Thank you. Now we're at 10. Finance. Tonight, we have a special presentation tonight, Ms. Nicole, if you would. Mr. Kerr, you want to say anything before we get started?
I just would like to say that I'm proud of our finance department. We've come a long way in the last couple of years. And I think this audit, as well as our position, is, does show that progress. So kudos to Nicole Cross and her staff for that.
Thank you. Welcome tonight, sir.
Well, thank you. And let me just open up by saying I concur with what you just said. As you all know, we did the audit for the first time last year. We've seen a lot of progress just in.
Hey, guys, we, we got it. Can you speak into the mic, sir?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. As you know, last year, we did the audit for the first time and there has been a lot of improvement just in the last year alone.
I can't hear you.
I can't get much. I mean, I'm right here. I don't know.
Brian, can you turn it up just a little bit for me, please, sir?
I'll be happy to go wherever you. I can get.
It's up as loud as, that's as loud as.
I'm about one inch, there we go.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
All right. Okay. Again, I've seen a lot of improvement just in one year. So I hear you talking about the last couple of years. I don't doubt it because we saw a lot just in one year alone. And that's a good thing. That's, you know, the kind of progress you want to see. I think about what I've sat through tonight with y'all strategic direction, your vision. I see a lot of complimenting things coming together right now. Y'all got a lot of good things going on right here, right now. Not just the finance department, but then the Facebook situation and all the property going on out there. Then I think about the vision that I heard everybody talking about. You got a lot of good things going on here. I think the audit actually kind of complements that this year. And that's a good thing. What I was going to do, unless y'all want to do otherwise, you've got two documents. You've got the CAFR itself. It's about 145 pages of the best reading you could ever have. And then I've got a shorter version that I put together that kind of walks you through the audit and tries to talk in layman's terms and kind of hit the highlights. And I don't know, is that okay with y'all if we just go through that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, again, this is called, we call this the auditor's discussion and analysis. And it's meant to be assistance to you all. As you open it up, we basically introduce ourselves a little bit. All these counties that you see listed, those are counties that we currently serve, just in case you were wondering. And then on page, whoa.
It worked.
All right, y'all are getting to me tonight. All right. All right, on page one. Page numbered one, we kind of cover, can I step back? We kind of cover a little bit about what we're going to talk about tonight. And the main thing we're going to talk about is the audit itself and the numbers. As you turn to page two and three, there's a little bit more information about who we are, just in case people want to know, who is this audit firm? When you go to page four, we talk about the audit report itself. When you have an audit, you've got two parties involved, the auditor and the audity. For the audit to be successful, both sides have to do their job. And I'm happy to say that is indeed the case this year. They were prepared. We got out here and did what we needed to do. It was a lot cleaner than it was a year before. And I just, again, go back to what Lloyd said. I just saw a lot of improvement this year, and that's a great thing. At the end of the day, we're able to give you an unmodified or what you might call a clean audit opinion. So we do believe this CAFR presents fairly everything about the financials of the county for the year ended June 30, 18. That's what you want to hear. Turning the page, page five talks about the CAFR itself. This is the second year you all prepared a CAFR. Last year, you prepared one, but of course, we had all the delays because of some of the outstanding items. And it was not able to be presented to the GFOA. I believe it's fair to say this year that Nicole has offered this to the GFOA for their scrutiny and review. And I fully expect this to be awarded a certificate of excellence from the GFOA. I don't see what would make that not happen. So again, I think about the strides you all have made. This is another example of the strides that I see. So it's a good thing. It goes above and beyond the call of duty. They've got a lot of information in that that goes back 10 years, and that's a good thing. When you turn to the financial statement page, starting on page six, I tried to explain to people what we have here. What is the government all about? You've got a lot of things under the umbrella of the government itself. And when you look at the primary government, which is what you all have your hands on, I'm not talking about the Health Department, I'm not talking about those other entities that are related, but just the part that you have the direct oversight of. You're a pretty good sized government. You think about it, you all took in about, let's see, about $101 million worth of revenues this year. Now, you had expenses of 104, 105, excuse me. You had a $4 million loss at the entity wide level. Some people might say, what in the world happened there? Because we had the general fund actually had money and actually made a good bottom line. But you all had a couple of isolated things occur this year that had happened in prior years, but it kind of culminated this year. You had the ABM property that had to be addressed and written off, essentially. And that was for something that we'd incurred in previous years. But now we had to go ahead and deal with it in the statements once everything's settled. You had the litigation going on with the property out there, the reservoir property. That ran through this entity wide level this year. So you had a lot of things that were hitting the entity wide level that caused it to show the loss. We back away from it. And y'all actually had a pretty good year from just general operations. So like when you look at the general fund, if you go to page seven, the general fund actually had a reasonably good year. You had 59 million in revenues, of which about 85% of that was taxes, all kind of taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, everything. So you had about 59 million. And you can see the pie chart there, all that green on there, there's taxes. As you turn to the next page, you look at page eight, and we've got another pie chart about the expenditures. And the expenditures were 64 million. They were actually more than what you had for revenues. You might say, well, that's not good. The trouble is that we had to go ahead and write off some things. That litigation had to be addressed this year in the general fund. You had transfers come in from the other funds, from those bond proceeds and that kind of thing. But you had to take it on the chin of the general fund and write it off. And that was about $10 million. You take that away, the general fund actually had a really good year, okay? If you look at the page nine, you'll see a chart that shows the net change in fund balance. Notice the numbers that are in red, and they're all negatives. That was the previous four years. Y'all were eating into fund balance. You were using more of your funds than you were taking in. You were using old savings, essentially. But the last two years, you've seen an increase by over $7 million. That's a great direction to go. And people might ask, why is that so important? Well, we've got economic cycles we go through. And I hear tonight, all the initiatives you all have. If you want to continue to be proactive with these initiatives, these strategic visions, you have to have a good, healthy fund balance. I'd say right now, your fund balance is starting to look pretty good. Depending on how you want to measure it, you've got anywhere between 70 days worth of fund balance and 90 days of fund balance. Let me explain what I mean by that. If I look at your expenditures this past year, including that 10 million that was unique, then you're spending about 5.3 million a month. And so I compare that to your fund balance. It comes out to 70 days. But if I throw that out and call that an isolated situation, then you're down to spending only about 4 million a month. And I compare that to your fund balance, you've got 90 days. You've got about three months worth of fund balance at June 30. That's a good reasonable place to be for most governments. Because at June 30, you've got to still get through July, August, September, before those tax funds start coming in. The question you have to ask, and it's not for me to answer, it's for you to answer quietly to yourselves, is where do we think it needs to go? With all these initiatives, where do we want our fund balance to be? Another thing I think about is economic forecasters are always talking about recessions happen about every 12 years. Yeah, I remember when the last recession started. It was around 2008. 12 is 2020. I'm already hearing rumblings out there from the forecasters. They're playing with prime and all that kind of stuff, trying to ward off the recession. You might want to think about where you want to be so that you can go through the next recession, whether it starts in 2020 or 2024. You want to be where you can provide your routine services that your citizens want you to provide. And to be able to do all these initiatives that you're talking about, it's not going to be easy to get there. But I want to appeal to you to try to keep building up that fund balance a little bit, a little bit at a time. I'm not saying you got to build it up radically every year. But three months is a good place to be. But just from what I'm seeing with all your plans and this, you might want to build it up a little bit more, okay? That's just a recommendation. Do what you want with it. Again, you're in fine shape. It's interesting, I've met with three counties now in the last 24 hours. I won't name the counties, but one county I met with is about your size. And they've only got about two months worth of fund balance. You've got three. I met with another county right nearby that's got six months worth of fund balance. They're going to be able to weather the storm. They're already getting there, okay? Y'all might want to try to be somewhere around that four, five month reserves to be ready for these things that are coming our way. So again, just reflect on that. I can sit here and say this, the hard part is what y'all have to do and what management has to do. But I just want to share that concept with you. Any questions at this point? We can certainly stop.
Thank you, sir. Y'all, your team and you, y'all have did a wonderful job. So we thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mill, I appreciate everything you do. You always did a great job with the city. You did a great job for us now. Some of the liabilities you talked about booking, these are just one-time occurrences. And we're just getting the book cleaned up. Once those are booked, we're moving on from here.
Yes, sir.
And those are things that happened way back.
Right.
But we had to get them booked.
They culminated in this cycle.
Correct. So now we're submitting our financial report to the Georgia Financial Officers.
Government Finance Officers.
Yes, sir. So we're in good shape.
You're going in the great direction right now. You've made a turn. If you look at that chart on page nine, you can see the turn. You can see what's going on. And if y'all could do anything even remotely close to that for another couple of years, you're going to be in a great place to be. And that'll just complement all the things you all were talking about earlier tonight. And I think that's a great place to be. So again, a lot of positives here. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And if you've got any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call.
I don't have any questions.
I'll be happy to come up here and visit with you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on item number 13, which is GIS, discussion consideration of contract with the Atlantic Group. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This contract is for the county to obtain LIDAR information for our GIS services. We are working in tandem with Georgia Mountains Regional Authority and a number of other counties in the state. We are obtaining a considerable discount for this if we do this at this time. We do have the budgeted funds in order to do that, and this will be split three ways. 40% will be paid for by the county, and 30% will be paid for by the City of Covington, and 30% by the Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. So we would ask that you would approve this contract. I'm sorry, let me flip to the page to get to the dollar amount. If you have any questions, too, on any of the technical aspects, Tim Lawrence and Scott Sirock from GIS are here as well tonight. The total cost is $34,000. The county's portion is $13,696.71.
Thank you. I seek a motion, Commissioners.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
Can you state it not to exceed the amount, please?
Okay. Make a motion to approve the contract with the Atlantic Group LLC for $34,242.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is development of service discussion consideration to extend the moratorium.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to ask that the Planning and Zoning Development Services Director Judy Johnson come up to address you on the issue of continuance of this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you will recall, last November, we asked for you to put a 90-day moratorium to allow us the time to put some new regulations in place for multifamily. Today, we come back before you and ask for an extension. We would like to have 60 days. We have this zoning amendment scheduled to go before our planning commission this, the fourth Tuesday of this month, which I believe is going to be February the 26th. We could potentially then bring it to you by March the 19th meeting, which would be 45 days from today. So we ask, if you would, to give us 60 days, which would allow us enough time that in case this board decided to table the amendment, to make sure that we are covered under the moratorium, so we do get new regulations in place. On the agenda request, I had asked to include the overlays as well. However, the resolution that I laid in front of you this evening does exempt the overlays, so this would just be for the unincorporated area of Newton County, and to allow us the 60 days, and you will see this amendment come before you, if not before, by your March 19th meeting.
Thank you. Any question, Commissioners? Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Judy, is it possible that if, assuming the planning commission were to approve it on the 26th, that we would get it on the agenda for the first meeting in March as opposed to the 19th?
Yes, sir. We will be, we could do that. Advertisements are due to go to our legal organ tomorrow, so we would just have to note that it would be coming to the March 5th meeting, correct?
Yes.
Today, yes.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Judy, I'm sitting here looking at the resolution, trying to get a number on it for us. Tell me where you want us to go with filling in the numbers that are blanks on the resolution, or if you could give us recommendations on what you think would be the best action to take.
Okay. If you would like, I would, I can read the resolution and insert the numbers, if that, okay? "A resolution of Newton County, Georgia, enacting a limited temporary moratorium for 60 days on the acceptance of application for land disturbance permits and building permits for property to be used for multifamily residential purposes on property that is not located in an overlay district. Whereas, recent development trends in the county suggest that current trends for multifamily residential use may not be adequately addressed by the current zoning ordinance, and whereas, the Board has directed the Development Services Department to evaluate possible revisions to the 2009 Newton County zoning ordinance and the 2003 development regulations with respect to the regulation of multifamily residential development so as to address current development trends, and whereas, the Development Services Department is in the process of reviewing current status and preparing possible amendments to the zoning ordinance and development regulations, and whereas, on November 6, 2018, the Board of Commissioners previously adopted a limited temporary 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for land disturbance permits and building permits for property to be used for multifamily residential purposes on property that is not located in an overlay district, and whereas, the department expects considerations of the revisions to the zoning ordinance and development regulations by the Board of Commissioners within the next 45 days, and whereas, the Supreme Court has held that a moratorium with respect to application of a zoning ordinance may be put in place for a reasonable period of time without the necessity of complying with notice requirements of the Georgia zoning procedures law, and whereas, the Board finds an additional limited temporary moratorium barring for 60 days the acceptance of application for land disturbance permits and building permits for property to be used for multifamily residential purposes on property that is not located in an overlay district to be reasonably necessary, the least restrictive means available, and reasonable exercise of the county's police power, and in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, and now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, that, one, the Newton County Board of Commissioners does hereby enact a limited temporary moratorium barring for 60 days the acceptance of applications for land disturbance permits and building permits for property to be used for multifamily residential purposes for property not located in an overlay district. Two, the moratorium imposed by this resolution shall terminate on the earliest date of, one, the date that is 60 days from the date of this resolution. Two, approval by the Newton County Board of Commissioners of an additional moratorium after a public hearing. Or, three, the adoption of an amendment to the current language of the 2009 Newton County zoning ordinance and the 2003 development regulations related to regulation of multifamily residential development. And, three, this resolution shall be effective upon a majority vote by the Board of Commissioners, so resolved for the public's health, safety, and welfare, demanding it's this fifth day
Chairman?
Commissioner Schultz?
I have to say, I'm a little bit confused, because there was no resolution included in my packet, and so I was trying to pay attention as Judy read the resolution. I thought I understood Mr. Kerr's request that this moratorium would come before the Board of Commissioners in 45 days, but that's not what I heard when Judy read the resolution, and I'm still confused if the overlays will be included in this moratorium, or if they will be excluded.
Commissioner Schultz? The overlays are exempted from the request to extend the moratorium. Our plan, as requested by the county manager, would be to actually bring the amendment that would nullify the moratorium once adopted. That amendment would come before this board on the March 5th Board of Commissioners meeting. Should it be adopted at that time, again, the moratorium would then be moot. If it was tabled for some reason, it would allow us through your March 19th meeting in order to bring this before the board. So, we do not anticipate a full 60 days. The overlays are not included in this, but we do request to have that in case something unforeseen comes up, and we're not able to bring that amendment to the board, or the board needs more time to consider it.
So, my understanding, though, is according to this resolution that we would be voting on, the overlays are still exempted. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Edwards?
I was just going to make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're going to let Attorney Martin present it, please.
Commissioner Edwards, if you don't mind, we didn't have a resolution number in the description, so I'm going to put that in the form of a motion if you want to then follow along with that. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R.020519A, as presented by Judy Pardon me, I will restate that. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R.020519B, as presented by Ms. Judy Johnson.
So moved, as stated by the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Next on the agenda is item, I think it's 16, item number 16, county attorney, Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Banks. As you all know, it's been several years ago, but you all chose to participate in a class action lawsuit regarding the taking of lands by the U.S. Railroad Systems. Specifically, we are part of a class action group that is seeking relief due to the takings of lands from local governments. The firm that has been representing Newton County since the inception of this litigation is Arant Fox. The attorneys responsible for the matter have learned that Arant Fox is closing their Minneapolis office, so they will no longer be with Arant Fox, since that is their area. I have received four different letters from the attorneys that work on this particular litigation, indicating where they'll be going as far as their next step in their legal career. I have looked at each of these, and I must tell you, I come out each time with Ms. Megan Largent. She is the attorney that traveled here to Newton County and rode around with one of our land lawyers to take a look, take photos. I will tell you, one of the attorney's names was Thor, so I will go ahead and put it out there, if you want a really aggressive-sounding attorney. But I do, I'm supportive of Megan Largent, simply because she knows Newton County the best and knows this project the best. So I am seeking your approval to continue representation with Megan Largent in her new firm, which is not named yet.
Commissioners, I seek a motion.
She'll be in Minneapolis.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes five to zero. Thank you. You want to begin? Okay, let's do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes four to one. Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion consideration of resolution R.020519. Attorney Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Banks. I would ask that Commissioner Cowan go ahead and indicate your conflict in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Butcher is a client of the law firm that I'm working with. I've been involved in research of this property and everything, so I'll.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. Just to give you a little bit of a factual background on this item, Mr. Butcher, and I'm sorry if Mr. Butcher is here and I'm mispronouncing it, if it is Butcher, I apologize. This gentleman owned a large tract of property that was divided into several tracts. The county acquired tracks 1 through 4 from Mr. Butcher between 2006 and 2007. The county acquired track 1 first to allow the county access, my apologies, across an easement over track 5 directly to the north, and also over track 4, which the county later did acquire. The, and I will tell you why I'm having to stop. My eight-year-old continues to call, so my apologies. Getting back to you, the county did have a 20-foot access easement over track 5 directly to the north, and also over track 4, which the county later acquired. The easement over track 4 merged with the county's ownership and will not be affected by tonight's action. The county later acquired tracks 2, 3, and 4 between late 2006 and early 2007. Since tracks 3 and 4 have direct access to Dover Road, we understand the county no longer has a need to use the easement over track 5. Mr. Butcher would like to make track 5 available for sale, and he has requested that the Board approve the disposition of the easement over the track, since it is no longer needed. To that end, before the Board is a resolution and quit plain deed that would accomplish Mr. Butcher's request that the county dispose of this easement. Mr. Kerr, if you would, could you explain the research you did on this particular area of land?
Pardon me, yes. I did take a look at all of the tracks, and I verified that there was sufficient access to Dover Road, that there were properties that actually bordered, some of those lots that did border on Dover Road, which would give us adequate access to our properties. So, there's no need for the county to have that excess easement across Lot 5.
As such, we would be seeking approval of Resolution R.020519, authorizing disposition of access easements to a budding property owner pursuant to OCGA Section 3693H. Thomas A. Butcher, the property owner.
Can I get a motion, please? So moved, stated by the county attorney. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes one, I mean, it passes four to one, with one, it passes four to one with one extension, please. Next on the agenda is county, I mean, county attorney, consideration of general release
Thank you, Chairman Banks. This agreement that we have before us tonight to settle a matter involves where we had a county employee driving a county-owned vehicle that did hit another vehicle, although there was not serious damage. We have been able to work out nuisance value settlement of $4,500 on this claim. Your legal fees to attempt to fight this are going to be far in excess of $4,500 on a matter where our employee did receive a citation. So, certainly, it is the Board's will if you'd like to go forward with the settlement, but I do believe that this would be in the best interest of the county to avoid those excess legal fees, and approve the settlement with Mr. Brad Maestray in the matter of Brad Maestray, the Wendy Cutress in her individual capacity.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve settlement agreement regarding the Superior Court case, Brad Maestray versus Wendy Cutress, Civil Action Number 2018, CV 1031-4, in the amount of $4,500.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any, any other discussions? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes five to zero, thank you. Next is alcohol renewals.
With the chairman's permission, I will go ahead and introduce the resolution that you associate. As you all know, Newton County changed the form of government, I guess, two years ago now, quite a fast turnaround. And as you also know, Mr. Lloyd Kerr is reappointed to serve as county manager this year. During discussions, it was an item of understanding what the form of government legislation indicated as to how many people it would take to approve the county manager being appointed to service the county manager. However, there was a motion made a couple of years back requiring a supermajority vote over two meetings to remove the county manager. That is certainly within a county's home rule authority because it is a personnel matter. Utilizing that same home rule authority, we have before you tonight Resolution R-020519A, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to clarify county manager appointment and removal procedures. Are you fine with me reading the whole resolution? Okay. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November of 1982 and effective July 1, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 thereof, that the governing authority of each county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations relating to its property, affairs, and local government for which no provision has been made by general law and which is not inconsistent with the Constitution or any local law. Whereas Section 1-105 of the Newton County Form of Government Local Legislation, that is 2016 Georgia Laws 3663, sometimes referred to as the Charter, provides for the position of a county manager. Whereas the Charter provides that the county manager is appointed by a majority of the members of the Board of Commissioners from a list of qualified candidates supplied by the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And whereas the Charter provides that the county manager serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners and may be removed by a simple majority of the commissioners with ratification by the chairman of the Board of Commissioners or by a four-person majority of the commissioners without ratification by the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. Number one, the Board of Commissioners recognizes that the provisions of the Charter, as summarized herein, control the appointment and removal of the county manager. Any previous resolutions or ordinances of the Board of Commissioners inconsistent with the Charter in this resolution, including any resolution purporting to require a supermajority of commissioners for appointment or removal when not required by the Charter, are hereby repealed. You will note that this resolution shall become effective on January 1, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioners. I seek a motion, please. Any questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question I asked is that I was on this board when they changed the charter, they changed to a four, a majority, supermajority, a four, it said be four commissioners. And I see it then, as I'm gonna say now, it didn't seem to be convenient to change it, and it shouldn't have been changed. If you're gonna change something, why you gonna come back maybe next year or two years and change it to something else, to a majority? I personally, I personally think that it should remain the way it is. I know it's not, but I'm gonna give my opinion. It's because, well, maybe next year you say, well, here you might go out and do home rooms, say it could be two commissioners. And I think we just, I think we just change it for convenience, and I think it should be some, you know, solid. I also thought at the same time that the chairman should have maintained the road department, but I was, I guess if it was a supermajority and they changed and said, well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna give it to the county manager, so now they're back to changing it. And I think that when you start changing personnel, it begins to be a real problem. He or she wouldn't know from year to year where they may stand unless they did what a certain commissioner did and they voted them out of their job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding in our discussions of this, this is to help bring consistency to the charter and the operational ordinances of the county. We had two different, two different systems out there. This is to bring this in line with the form of government charter that was passed, and it was part of the, well, part of the creation body of Newton County. So it was, it's not done for any particular purpose other than to just bring in consistency, and that's what we felt like we were supposed to do.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes four to one, thank you. Next on the agenda is alcohol renewal. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two renewals tonight. The first one is license number BLB 21385, Alina Express LLC, located at 1756 Highway 11, Covington, Georgia, 30014127-4. The type of license is beer and wine, and the applicant's name is Celine Chagun. The second license is license number BLB 20217, TCF Enterprise LLC, 1820 Highway 11, Covington, Georgia, 30014127-4B. And the license type is beer and wine, and the applicant's name is Juan Dong.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. We doing both, we doing, do both at one time? We doing both at one time, I just need a motion.
I believe that it's actually in District 1.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It passes five to zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to come up and make comments about any topic. If you will, please come at this time, please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Gene Wills, 125 Homestead Way, Covington, Georgia. Greetings, Commissioners. As I heard at the first presentation on strategic planning, we're talking about one group of, well, one Covington, one Newton County. But there's never, there's never gonna be a one Newton County, one Covington with that statue in the town square. No matter what you do, the changes is gonna be equivalent to red lipstick on a pig. It's still ugly. And there's no credible argument why it should be there. United Daughters of the Confederacy worked with the Ku Klux Klan. They filed up our history by writing the history books, changing the history of what really happened. Each governor wrote what it was, slavery. You're changing our way of life. Then we have people saying that, well, the rumors was the North was coming down to take their land and things. You gotta reflect on the fact that the Confederacy fired first on Fort Sumter. White supremacy is not real. The things I want people to understand is that this whole white thing is not real. We had prisoners that were released from Britain that came here, fifty-two thousand or more, who worked as servants, servitude, seven years. So not everybody was a duke, queen, or anything. A lot of your ancestors were criminals who got a chance to reform their life. And then in the beginning also, it wasn't just, in Jim Crow days, it wasn't just blacks that were turned back. It was the Irish, it was the Italian, it was Catholics, it was Jews, anyone different from a Protestant, white Protestant, basically from England. And I'm ending with this, we can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist. And that's what that statue represents, a denial to my right to exist. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? May come at this time, you got three minutes to do so with me. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Thomas Butner, 65 Flea Drive. Well, I think if we're gonna take down the statue, let's take down the Martin Luther King road signs. What are you talking about?
He got, he got two minutes and forty-four seconds. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Every street in Atlanta that had anything to do with the Confederacy at all has been or are being changed to something else. I mean, you got your statue, what is the streets? Okay, like Confederate Avenue, they changed it. Stewart Avenue, they changed it. They done doing away with all, anything that's got anything to do with the Southerners or the Confederacy, that's history. So every town in the United States has gotta have a Martin Luther King Street. I mean, the man who's in charge of the FBI, what was his name?
Hey, guys, come on. He got a minute and thirty-two seconds.
You know, he didn't have much to say good about Martin Luther King. I can't remember his name right now. But anyway, so, I mean, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Let's be fair about the whole thing.
Thank you, sir.
Sarah Dobie, 13500 Ridge Drive, District 1, Newton County. I wanna bring things back around to where this meeting started. I was very impressed with the plan that you voted on to look at our future, to have a plan for our future. I did discover in my participation in some of those meetings that there may be some rules somewhere that some meetings can't be or don't need to be published for the public. I think if we really wanna have real transparency in this part of the 21st century, every meeting that is not required by law to be private and confidential should be posted on the county website, and that would include the JDA meetings. Because we know that it was lack of transparency with a lot of those things which got our county in trouble. And I think most of the citizens want us to continue to work our way out of that. And those of us that are interested in attending meetings need to know about them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? May come at this time, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening once again, Commissioners. My name is Gladstone Nicholson, still live at the same place, 495 Lakeside Circle. The last speaker stole some of my thunder, reason being she mentioned transparency. Now transparency covers a whole panoply of things. It covers what the first speaker said, what the last speaker said, but also covers the need or necessity of freedom of information requests. If I remember, and my memory may not be the best, FOIA came about because there was a whole, you might say aversion to open government in many areas, not just Georgia, not just, all over the country. And FOIA had to be done to spearhead that sense of transparency. I just hope with our new strategic planning and its thrust for transparency and trust in government that maybe citizens won't be faced with a response that, well, if you wanna find this out, just send us a frame of information that you request. I think that just spoils the spirit of transparency and trust itself. So we'll see what happens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? For once? Don't. Commissioners, any Commissioners comments?
Quick question, Megan. Where we have on the county code for compaction?
Thank you for asking that. We are on the fifth draft of revisions. It's currently at twenty-three hundred pages, so I will just be completely honest with you, Commissioner Cowan. After reading it for about two hours, I have to stop just because I can't, at that point in time, I can't absorb it much more. So I have our last call set up with MuniCode's counsel that's set up for the first Wednesday in March to go through the revisions. Ms. Judy has been so helpful, she's been able to locate several P and D resolutions that contained modifications, so we were able to get, I think there were sixteen, we were able to get those all to MuniCode in the last month so that we wouldn't be charged for further codification. So assuming that MuniCode is happy with this fifth and final draft, we will be codified very, very soon.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The only other thing I wanna mention, Chief Connor, your fire service award thing was super good, Mike. Just glad to see so many young, young men and women wanting to get involved in fire service, and it's just, it's just good, it's good for the whole county to know our fire stations are getting back to full staff. And I know you got some room to go, but it's good to see that. People don't realize it takes a lot of people to run a fire truck, and you gotta have them, so it's just good to see that. Appreciate you and invite.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, just something quickly saying, is that most times when you don't say anything, if you don't go out and vote, then you're saying vote yes for whomever might be elected. And sometimes it's not, maybe not the people who you want to be in office. And so, simple what I'm saying is, if you take the time out, and if we could just love one another, and I just wanna keep saying that, love one another. And I'm gonna talk just briefly about a young lady, Ms. Emma Jean Green, she go-
She goes to Bethlehem Baptist Church. And I learned from a former chairman, cheerwoman Kathy Morgan, because she let me get a picture of, did anybody have an old picture of Martin Luther King when he would be down at Bethlehem Church back when he was adolescent? And so they sent me to her. And what I found out of what she said was, she says, yes, as a child, I played with him. Went down here to Bethlehem Church before he became the man that he is, that we look at and talk about today. And so there's a lot of rich history in Newton County, a rich history. And I think it deserves not to be in a jail. Davis Morgan, the former tributor, deserved not to be in jail. Roy Vaughn deserved not to be in that old county jail. It needed to be in a respectful place, along with the memorabilia we have downstairs in a respectful place where we all can come and visit and see what the past have helped us make this county, this beautiful county, what it is today. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just listening to some of the citizen comments that just came about, I just want to take an opportunity in a moment to encourage our county. We know that there, we're not a perfect county, and this strategic plan is just the beginning of where we're going. And so I want to encourage every single citizen of Newton County to know that you have a government that supports you, stands behind you, wants to see the best for you. And so there are some hot topics that are going on that some of our citizens may feel should be addressed immediately. It's going to take a process, it's going to take some time. And so I think as a board, I just want to encourage our citizens to work with us, give us, you know, your feedback as much as possible, and just know that we're moving in a positive We are on the cusp of something great. And even when you look at that strategic plan, it is the way that it is now, but let's work to make it better. Let's take it from good, because I believe it's good now, and let's take it to great. And so everything that we see right now in that strategic plan is just the foundation of where we're moving and where we're going. And so, yes, we have some things that we want to address within our county. And I believe that where we are now, it's going to happen, and you're going to begin to see some positive moves, you're going to begin to see some positive changes. And so just hold on tight, work with us, and I'm just positive that we'll begin to see our county move in a positive direction. I didn't get an opportunity to make Sheriff Brown's training, but I wanted to commend him on that training. I had a prior meeting, so I wasn't able to make it, but congratulations to all those. I got to see some photos, and I was excited about that as well as Chief Connor. Great, great event, and congratulations to those men that are moving. I believe that our first responders are important because they're going to keep our community safe. And this is a place where we not only want to live, work, and play, but we also want to make sure that we're safe at the end of the day. And so I just want to encourage our citizens to have faith in us as a board. Don't give up on us so quickly if we haven't addressed your specific concern as quickly and as possible as you'd like. Just know that we hear all of our citizens, and we're going to do our best to work together to make this one Newton. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards, can I do one thing right quick? Because I completely forgot about Commissioner Schultz over there. Commissioner Schultz, you want to give me comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you and those who helped to put together the ability for me to participate in this call from the opposite side of the United States. So I appreciate the effort that went in because I really don't like missing meetings, and it was, I know that it really helped me, so I appreciate that. I just want to echo what Commissioner Mason has said about giving us time and being patient with us. Having served on the Planning Committee, you know, we take very seriously those strategies that we put forth, especially the transparency and the communicating and the two-way communication. And I want to emphasize the two-way communication because it's really important that we hear from our citizens on how we're doing. We can't improve if we don't have that feedback from the citizens. And so I want to thank the process for allowing two opportunities for citizens' comments at each board meeting. I want to thank Brian Fazio for the new website so that you can have, submit your questions. I hope we will continue to improve the website so we can be more interactive. One of the things that I learned today in this session that I'm attending is how we can integrate chat experiences. And so I think that the more we can dialogue, the more we can learn from our constituents, the better we will all be and more likely we are to really achieve that goal of one Newton. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I missed, although I got to see via Facebook, a couple of events, one with the Sheriff's Department, one with Fire Services. My apologies for missing those events. But the second thing I want to do was just, if you'll allow me, is if we could get Frank and Allison Foster to stand up just one second. On behalf of the board, and I'm at the risk of overlapping the Chairman here a little bit maybe, thank you for facilitating our strategic plan. It was, it was, I don't know of any other way to put it besides seamless. It went so well, and of course, the whole team, but particularly you two. I just want to thank you personally. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First of all, tonight has been, to me, a very productive meeting. There's a lot of things unfolded tonight. We started off with a powerful prayer about what I believe about powerful man of God. Then we came up with our strategic plan, something our county has been starving for. And now we here, we at the point of implantation. We ready to, we ready to get it implemented. It's a citing time, I think it's a citing time not only for the employees, for the Commissioners, for the constitutional officers. Sheriff is here now, and like I said earlier, he did call, and, you know, he's been a part of this plan, and he gives his plan. Sheriff, you want to put your thumb up? And I do apologize, Ms. Linda Hayes was here tonight as well. I didn't get the opportunity to bring her up. She's a constitutional officer. And they had a lot to do with our plan, a lot of input, so we thank them as well. But guys, you have heard a lot of things tonight, and you got to kind of disciple through and kind of put it in perspective. But we are one Newton. We're going to keep on striving to be one Newton. We're going to keep on pushing to be one Newton. And we're going to love on each other, we're going to respect each other, and we're going to be okay. So I am excited about this plan. Mr. Kerr, we appreciate your leadership. You pulled, you pulled the team together, department heads, people in the community, along with the Fosters, and you got it done. So now it's time to see it in action. Missing somebody? Try to get somebody, I don't want to leave anybody out. Okay, so we, you know, we want to, we want to bridge that gap with the different cities in the, in the community, Oxford, New Bern, Mansfield, Porter Dale, the city of Covington. So we can't make that, that vision of one Newton come to pass. I got two more years here, I'm going to keep on pushing one Newton until I'm out the door. So y'all listen for it. If you can, hashtag one Newton. Tell your friend, one Newton. We're going to keep on pushing, we're going to keep on leveling on each other. Last but not least, we having a family fun day, March the 16th. It's free. It's not, let me make sure. Brian, you got my mic up? It's free, it's not causing any taxpayer, it's not using any taxpayer's money. Y'all make sure y'all get that out, we're not using any taxpayer's money. We want to just fellowship and get, get the citizens of the community to get an opportunity to meet their elected officials all across the county. City Council from Mansfield all the way to the City Council to Oxford, Covington Police, the Sheriff Department, Social Circle. And so we looking for a fun day, food, games, fellowship. We're excited about it. We're excited about the direction that the community is going in. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. We do have a, we do have an executive session tonight. I don't think there will be a vote, but I do seek a motion to enter into executive session. I'm sorry, litigation, I apologize, litigation. So move. It been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Thank you, executive session.